First, before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, so everybody can sit down over there. You're a little nervous when you're standing up. We're gonna have a public hearing first, and this is a public hearing to consider the implementation of a community revitalization district which covers approximately 86.7 acres in the C2 zoning district. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the implementation of the community revitalization district? Mrs. Marshall?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. This request came from John and Patty Stahl to the mayor to implement this district, and this is modeled after a program that the city of Worcester did where we carve out a certain area in our central and surrounding downtown, which is the 86-ish acres that you mentioned. This is for smaller communities. The district cannot exceed 100 acres, and this allows us to bring in D5L liquor licenses that can attract additional restaurants. It is not for bar use only. Seventy-five percent of the gross annual sales must be for food or meals. The license fee for the businesses would be $2,344, and we feel that this tool will be beneficial because right now our square is full, and we currently, at the state of Ohio, only have one D5 permit left with two applications on file. So with all of our redevelopment efforts downtown, if we wanted to bring in new restaurants, they would not be able to get a permit without buying it from another community and then transferring it into the city of Medina. And sometimes those liquor licenses are sold on the secondary market for thousands of dollars. So this levels that playing field a little bit with that licensing fee for $2,344. The most that can be issued in the district are 15 licenses, and those licenses have to stay within the city of Medina, within that district. And we worked with our legislatures on amending Ohio Revised Code to include the verbiage for Medina County population, and I believe the city of Wadsworth is also looking at putting this in their Main Street community as well. And we just feel that this would be a great economic development tool. We worked with also Main Street Medina, the Chamber of Commerce, and County Economic Development. We all wrote letters of support, and I don't know if the mayor has anything else to add.
Sir?
Yes.
I'm not sure if I missed it. I don't want to duplicate what she said, but my recollection is that this is not for bars, but 75% of the business has to be for food. So what we're looking at is to create other dining opportunities with the availability of alcohol, again, to enhance and promote our downtown, which has become a destination spot, and with the new deck that we're going to build and the redevelopment of the property along Liberty Street from Sully's to the federal chambers on the corner here of Liberty and Elmwood, we just feel that this would be beneficial and avoid having the new businesses having to go on the black market and pay much more, especially when they're starting up and money is pretty tight for them. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe, just to add to that, usually government only does half the story when they do redevelopment, and this is a step where, at least I view it as, government thinking about the uses that may take place with the redevelopment that was occurring between Sully's and the federal court building and possibly across the street instead of trying to get more development without the opportunity for liquor permits probably would be something that you would expect the government to do, but I think we're doing it a little differently and looking at the whole picture, which I'm glad to see that we're doing because we need to keep the square growth and the individuals coming to the square from all around northeast Ohio. To keep that pace, we need to keep adding on and providing different opportunities for both restaurants and maybe a bar or two, but mostly restaurants, as you mentioned, 75%. So I'm glad to see this happening, and I'm glad to see that hopefully this will gain momentum and provide those opportunities to those future businesses that will want to locate downtown and surrounding downtown. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in favor of the community revitalization district? Okay, is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition to the community revitalization Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Now, if you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I call this September 24th, 2018 council meeting.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hefinger.
Here.
Parnell Kaby.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coyne.
Here.
Lamb.
Read in a minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular council meeting of September 10th, 2018 is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Discussion on the minutes. Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to this evening's council meeting and will meet again. I think it's on Tuesday, not Monday, October 9th, since there's a holiday on the Monday. Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a Fire District Committee meeting tomorrow night, 4:30 PM here at City Hall downstairs. Other than that, I have no other report.
Thank you, Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you, Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Hefinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you, Water and Utilities Committee, Mrs. Parnell Kaby.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have no meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
And finally, Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have a meeting last Wednesday of the Emerging Technology Committee. In attendance was Armstrong and Sergeant Zaromba. Armstrong gave a very good presentation on why we are where we are with it. I do have a copy of that presentation. If anybody wants it, email me. I will forward it to you. But I do understand better what they're doing. They're kind of forced in certain instances to have, to keep up with the modern technology, but their subscriber base is so small that the dollars are so much that there's fewer people to spread it around. So that's part of the issue, but they are keeping up with the technology, and their equipment is just as good, if not better, than AT&amp;T, Verizon, or any of the other ones. So, yeah, they're charging us a lot, but I think we're getting a lot for what we're getting based on what they said. And then Sergeant Zaromba is, I don't know how he's doing it, but he's keeping us running. He's got all these projects going, keeping us up to date. He's got our new DR up and running, ready to go. He's got our belt suspenders disaster recovery going. He's doing an excellent job, so my hat's off to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Requests for council action. We have a few for finance. We have 18-166 budget amendments, 18-167, then and now for First Energy, 18-168, a resolution donating computers to the Medina City Schools, 18-169, expenditure over $15,000 for Woodway USA MCRC, 18-170, increased PO of 180533 for Lake County Sewer, and 18-171, increased PO 180534 Orion Equipment for the Streets. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank the department heads and Council President Coyne for covering for me last week while I was away on vacation. Appreciate that. Bicentennial community events coming up September 30th at 1 PM at Medina High School Middle Stage. There will be a presentation on the history of Medina schools and students presented by Roger Smalley and Gloria Brown. And then on October 2nd, 2018, at 1 PM at the Medina Library, the Medina Chamber and bicentennial committee will focus on the long history of manufacturing and industry in the city of Medina. For additional bicentennial upcoming events, they also have a website you can go to, which is www.madina200.com. And at this point, I would like to invite up Medina Fire Officer and LST Medic Brian Kavanaugh for a presentation of flags to Fire Chief Painter and LST Director Mark Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So I was overseas in Qwest, Iraq. We call it Q West. Don't get it confused with the other place. Key West, it's not as nice. But we, the fire department there, they flew these flags for the fire department and the life support team in recognition of their support of myself and just what they've done over the past 20 years for me. I've been in the military now for 25 years, and I've been working with the fire department for the past 18 and LST for about 15 years, and they've been very supportive of me and my deployments, and they continue to do that. And hats off to the city for what they do with the reservists and how they take care of their military. So I appreciate that, and these are for both the fire department and the life support team. Both of those, both Chief Painter and Chief Phillips both got coins from my commanding officer today. I presented the coins to them just earlier, so challenge coins. So thank you very much for everything.
I'll wait till the pictures are done. Could you just briefly go over how many tours of duty that you've spent overseas?
Yes, sir.
And where you've been?
I was in Iraq twice with the Marine Corps. The Marine Corps in 2003, I was a Navy corpsman, and then I was in Germany, Lauchstuhl, Germany, taking care of wounded soldiers during 2007 through 2009. And then I actually just deployed to Iraq. It's a forward operating base. We took care, we were a Role II, which is a medical unit that took care of wounded. We were supporting Iraq and Syria, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Okay, and then I'd like to invite back up LST Director Mark Phillips for a presentation.
So as you may know, a couple weeks ago, on September 9th, Medina hosted the sixth annual Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Run. It's a run that, based on a family, the Siller family, New York City, on 9/11, Stephen ran from his firehouse in Brooklyn through the Battery Tunnel to the World Trade Center. Foundation was started, and each year Medina hosts a run in September, the second Sunday in September. This year, we had around 500 participants that came out. Money raised by the foundation builds custom homes for wounded military. We've built two homes here in Ohio, and we support the families of fallen first responders. And this year, we supported three police officer families in Ohio as well. So the foundation this year wants to recognize the city of Medina with the National Run, Walk, and Climb Award. Follow the footsteps for exemplary service and for the following the footsteps of Stephen Siller in your community. Let us do good. I'd like to present that to Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark. And Mark also serves on the board of the foundation and represents Ohio and particularly Medina very well, and we thank you for your service there.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take just a brief second, echo what the mayor said. Really appreciate the work that Mark does on the Stephen Siller Run. I've done that for a number of years, and I appreciate it. And since Ms. Stahl is here, I'd like to thank PJ Marley for being open. After that's over, I get my breakfast burger after I'm done. I appreciate that as well. We have a budget meeting later this week, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Kinney, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our three newest officers, Vincent Pacoli, Christopher Wade, Evan Shear, are just now finishing up their field training program that's 12 weeks riding with a field training officer. They will be out on their own next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Look out. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items for council and the public. This Friday is our ribbon-cutting day. We do these jointly in collaboration with Medina Chamber of Commerce and Main Street Medina and County Economic Development Corporation. So our first one is at 9 AM for Shine Acupuncture and Wellness located at 805 East Washington Street in Suite 230. Then the next one's at 1 o'clock in the afternoon for Orange Theory Fitness. It's a grand opening at 1120 North Court Street, which is in the same plaza as Romeo's Pizza. And then the last one is at 4 o'clock for North Court Laundry. This is actually a grand reopening for them as they were displaced by the Route 42 widening project. So they are now located at 739 West Liberty Street in Medina. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two quick project updates. Last week, we finished the pavilion renovation at Ray Miller Park, and I wanted to, again, thank the Willard Stevenson Foundation for their donation to that important project. Secondly, we completed our turf renovation on the square. If you walk through town, you'll see a lot of ropes around the square as we allow time for the grass to grow in preparation for next year's season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. A quick update. The first eight months of this year was extremely busy and unpredictable for the Building Department. We've seen a big jump in the amount of new construction and reinvestment into the city of Medina. This includes residential, commercial, industrial, and medical projects. I contribute a large majority of this construction increase to the North Court Street road widening project alone. On North Court Street between Hillview and Harding, about 3/4 of a mile, there are two new commercial buildings, one single-use, one multi-tenant, five new businesses, Allies K Jewelers, Orange Therapy, Aspen Dental, Pulp Juice and Smoothies, occupancy of five vacant storefronts, including one expansion, major interior and exterior renovations of three restaurants. Within the same 3/4 mile of roadway, Hillview to Harding Street, there are 136 commercial spaces with only 17 vacancies, the largest of which is the old Kmart building. I believe, I believe once the North Court project is complete, there should be more interest in the Kmart building and site. Also regarding the Kmart site, the owners of the Kmart building have neglected this property and site for several years. We have and will continue stepping up code enforcement against the owners for both the exterior building conditions and the site conditions of the parking lot and driveway around the building. This ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. An update on our East Smith project. Last week, we did finish Phase 1, which is between Court and Broadway, and opened that. We started Phase 2, which is the section between Broadway and Jefferson. That block of East Smith is closed, was closed last weekend. We expect to be finished reopen within six to seven weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have contractors performing asphalt pavement repair where our water breaks occurred over the last year throughout the city. And then a brief reminder, our city auction is Saturday, October 20th at 10 AM at the City Garage, 781 West Smith Road. The preview for items is at 9 AM. The auction will begin at 10. List of the items for sale is listed on the city website. Thank you.
Thank you. Noticees, communications, and petitions, there's none. Unfinished business, there's none. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public who have been permitted the opportunity to speak and any issue or concern which pertains to the city during their portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach your front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Anybody? Yes, sir. Right up to the microphone over here. State your name and address.
My name is Frank Moses.
Is it on?
Hold on one second. Now it is. My name is Frank Moses. I'm one of the managers of Rice Fitness. The reason that me and the other manager are here is we were informed of something going on with the rec center as far as renovation project. We were wondering if that was on the agenda today.
That is not on the agenda today. Wait, is it? No. But there is an additional project that may, or is under consideration to occur to rec center, and Mr. Wright's not here, I don't believe. But it's an addition to the rec center to add additional space, and I don't recall off the top of my head if it's, how many square feet? Was it 4,000? Right around 4,000 square feet? And that's, I think it's in discussions right now, and I don't believe the school board has had a work session on it to discuss it yet. So it's at the beginning of the discussion stages, so I think it'll be another four to six weeks at least before any final decision will be made on that.
Okay.
So you're a little early.
I'm a little early. We were told it was on the discussion today, so that's why we showed up. Might have jumped the gun a little bit.
Yeah, I don't know who told you, but yeah. It's a little early.
The owner of our gym, he's on an emergency vacation, well, not vacation, but emergency family thing in South Carolina. He wanted us to step in.
But keep an eye on the agendas, and it'll be on discussion again, both at the schools and at the city. So keep an eye on that, then he can come and have discussion at that time.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, Resolution 14018, a resolution accepting a donation from the Medina Sunrise Rotary to renovate the lower pavilion at Reagan Park.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to accept a donation of $7,300 from the Medina Sunrise Rotary for the renovation of the lower pavilion at Reagan Park. Their donation is going to cover the costs associated with installing a new roof, siding, and fascia on the pavilion at the park. The Sunrise Rotary made a local commitment to the project and also received a district grant to help contribute to this, and due to their grant requirements, they're going to be paying the vendor directly for their portion of the work, but we're excited to work with them, and we're able to bump this project up on our schedule due to their contribution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on a resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Resolution 140-18 passes six through.
Ordnance 14118, an ordinance authorizing the payment to your construction for the private home rehabilitation at 240 East Union Street, Medina, Ohio, as part of the fiscal year 2016 CHIP grant program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved at it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on emergency clause and ordinance, Mr. Mendel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is a project, a home private rehabilitation for our house here in the city of Medina at 240 East Union Street. It's just shy of $46,000. This would do significant improvements to the house as part of the program, which just kind of helps reinvest into homes within the community that maintains our, the physical nature of our homes throughout the city. The emergency clause is requested because as a chip, the applicant, the contractors for these projects have to pay the cost ahead of time, and then it's reimbursed to them after it's approved and closed. With the emergency clause allows us to expedite it and return their capital to them quicker so that they can continue bidding on chip applications, and that's mainly due to the limited number of contractors that bid on these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordnance 141-18 passes six zero.
Ordnance 14218, ordinance authorizing expenditure to watch guard video for the purchase of a new body and cruiser camera system for the Medina Police Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved at it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on emergency clause and the ordinance, Chief Kinney.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our project to upgrade and replace our current body camera and cruiser camera system. We'd like to switch that to the watch guard video system, requesting the emergency clause due to the current system being end of life, and we're unable to replace equipment as it has been breaking.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hefinger.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordnance 142-18 passes six zero.
Ordnance 14318, ordinance amending ordinance number 17717, passed December 11th, 2017, amendments to the 2018 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing here is a transfer of appropriations within the police department. The others are all pass-through amounts, donations, and building fees that we have to pay onto the state separately there, but those we have to appropriate in order to pass those through.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb. Oh, sorry, he's not here. Ordnance 143-18 passes six zero.
Ordnance 14418, ordinance of the council of the city of Medina, Ohio, certifying that when a municipal obligation was incurred, sums were lawfully appropriated and the funds to satisfy the obligation and sufficient sums currently exist to satisfy this obligation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved at it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This involves a light pole that was taken out by a driver a while, actually, last year. We are on the hook for this because First Energy has been unable to collect from the driver, and we're asking for the emergency clause because the pole was replaced last year.
Thank you. Any further discussion on emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause.
Shields.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Parnell Kaybee.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Clerk, please call the roll on adoption and ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Parnell Kaybee.
Yes.
Ordinance 144-18 passes six zero.
Council comments. Bill's not here, maybe quiet, I don't know.
Mr. President?
Oh, Mr. Shields?
I do have one reminder, Councilman Hefinger and myself will be hosting a Ward 3 and a Ward 4 ward meeting at Heritage Elementary School on Tuesday, October 2nd, at 7:00 PM. We invite everybody from Ward 3 and 4, and anybody else from the city to attend as well.
Thank you. Any, any other council comments?
Mr. President.[1711.33]